Welcome to Politics Not Included, where we get to know the person, not their policy. We're creating a space to have real conversations with your elected officials and election candidates to get to know them as a person first. We're hoping these conversations will make it easier to approach and engage your local leadership. Now, before we get started with today's episode, I have a couple of ground rules to cover as always. The first is, Politics Not Included is hosted by the Transparent Campaign Initiative. And in the spirit of transparency, these episodes will be published without being edited. And we're doing this to keep this platform neutral and authentic to all of the guests that we have on the show. Now, what that means for you as a listener, or a viewer if you're on our YouTube channel, is that you may witness or hear longer pauses than anticipated, or some bloopers, or stumbling over words. And that's because you're watching or listening to this conversation as if it were live. You're hearing the whole thing in its entirety. And I'm excited to get to share these conversations with you in a true and authentic form. And that leads me to rule number two, that as you're watching or listening to this, if you have any comments that creep up in your head, that if you were sitting in this room with us, you may not have the confidence to say to our face, or you may not feel like the best human being if you did. I'm going to ask you to keep that in your head and out of the comments. And that's because we're just trying to have conversations to get to strengthen our community and to build each other up, rather than tear each other down. And in order to do that, I think we need to keep the comments kind. Now that all of that is out of the way, let's get this show started. Just one note before we get started with today's episode. All Wichita City Council candidates have been invited as a guest to appear on Politics Not Included. On today's episode, we welcome Margaret Chabaz. She is a process assurance trainer for Vestas. And she's also a candidate for the Wichita City Council District Six election taking place this November. Margaret, welcome to Politics Not Included.
Thank you, Morgan.
I'm really excited to have you here. And first of all, I want to say thank you for taking the time to sit down and have this conversation with me. I know that you're very busy. We're in the full swing of your campaign. And I know how busy you are. Your candidate form's coming up. So thank you for taking the time to sit down and talk to me. I'm excited to walk through some of your background, get to know you, and understand like why you're running for Wichita City Council. So can you take us back to the very beginning? Are you originally from Wichita?
Absolutely. Yes, I was born and raised here in Wichita, Kansas, 1984. I was born at Wesley Hospital on Central Hillside. To two young parents, Catherine, I was their second daughter, Catherine and Leroy, the late Leroy Wheeler Jr. He just recently passed, but yes, ma'am.
That's great that you're from this area. I'm sorry if you're about the passing. That must be tough. But can you walk us through the start of your career? So from what I could find, as we've chatted and I've done a little bit of research preparing for this, it looks like you started your career in inventory and warehouse operations, and have moved through different things like supply chain management. So where did you start and how did you move through roles to get to where you are today?
Great. I started from the bottom. Now I'm here. I love that. Because I literally started from the bottom and I have worked my way up and I am so proud. So I was young. I graduated from high school. I went to college for a little bit. Then I decided, you know, well, this isn't for me at the moment, you know? Started getting into the career field or whatnot, did little things, did, you know, I even was the director. But when I got into supply chain, I really liked it. And I started, you know, an aircraft company. And just there's shipping, not shipping, but in receiving where we had to count every part, piece by piece, to make sure we had everything and received it in. I excelled at that and some people hadn't seen me, so they actually created a new field, a new position for me. And I became a bin auditor. And that's where, and it was like, that's where you go and make sure everything is in place where it's supposed to be. We got the right amount and everything. Just do your investigations. So they gave me a special training. They said, well, hey, Margaret, what time do you think you need to be at work? And I said, oh, perfect. I get to pick my own schedule. I'm an early bird. So I told them, and when they asked me, I had to have a good reason too, okay? So a bin auditor is someone who goes, makes sure the parts, the part number on the bin is correct, and whatever is in that bin is correct as well, alright? If it's not, we need to find the part, where did it go, why did it not get signed out? So I told them I wanted to work from 5:00 to 1:30. 5:00 AM to 1:30 PM. They said, okay, well, what's your reasoning? I said, because I need to be at work when no one's here. And everything is just still, but then I need to be at work while people are here too, so I can ask questions, you know? And so I said, okay, well, cool. So they gave me that. So from there, I moved from, to a cycle count team where we just counted all the parts. So being in control of a lot of parts and money has been my job since 2010. From there, I moved to shipping and driving big machinery. And then I became a buyer and then a company, I was at Cox Machine here in Wichita, Kansas. After, so I actually stopped for a second and was a housewife and homemaker for a year. And once my husband passed away, I came back into the work field. So when I did that, I became a buyer. And my job was critical suppliers, the suppliers that wasn't making the mark. So I had to get them on time or move my, move my orders from them to another job. So I would go and actually go out. I said, when I start this job, the difference between me and everybody else is I said, if we want people to change and to believe we're serious, we have to do something different than making a phone call and giving an email. If these companies are right here in our same city, let me go out in the field, you know? Because it's different when you send an email to somebody, they can ignore that email, or they can say whatever. They can tell you on the phone, whatever, but then when you step inside to show them, hey, where's my stuff at? It gives a whole different meaning to everything, you know? And so I started excelling at that. And one of my suppliers actually was like, hey, Margaret, I like what you're doing. We need some help. Can you come over here? So I, I left and I went to this other company and I became a scheduler, a master scheduler. So I am very appreciative of that company. When COVID hit, COVID opened up the world, right? I think COVID is the worst thing, but the greatest thing that happened really. Because the jobs realized, hey, we're not paying people. We need to get more competitive. We need to, you know, we can work from home. So I started working from home at that point. And when things started opening back up, I got a job out of town. Where I was, then I went back to be in the buyer for a pet food company or whatnot. And now I'm in green space. And I was just over a few sites there, making sure inventory was straight. So I've always stayed in inventory. And now I've moved up and now I'm a trainer. So I've been through all the aspects. And I'm happy that I've started from the bottom and worked my way up, you know? Through this journey, I realized this is what I've wanted to do for my life career as well. So I even graduated and got my degree in supply chain logistics and management.
That's quite a journey and a really interesting way to move through that. You know, you always hear the saying, you can't do the stuff of management and training in your case if you don't understand all the pieces and parts to get there. And so you've gone through that and have that knowledge and that's a really cool background. When you first started in receiving parts, did you know, like if you're working with airline parts, did you know what the parts were, or were you learning pieces on an airplane as you're doing some of that stuff?
So we worked, my part was, we did the small pieces that made the big pieces, right? So your nuts, your bolts, all those types of things. So I learned a lot. And so I'm, I'm, I'm old school. Where I believe, and so I have an amazing memory too. I will say that. I pride on my memory. But I'm a read it, say it, or read it, write it, do it type of person, right? So in the field, once you're getting stuff and it's starting to be repeated, you're like, oh, okay. Then you start remembering after a while. And then once you're going to different places and seeing where they're used, like, oh, that's what that's for. And in my job and every job, that's what I love. I love being in the warehouse. So I can actually touch and learn, see where it's from. This is a different aspect of my job that I'm in because I am not there at all, you know? And I'm having, everything's off of memory. And teach, okay, well, this is how you figure out how, what this looks like. Teach them how to read specs and engineering and things like that.
So now you're in a training role. What's that like? Teaching people, I think I read on your campaign website, it was 42 or 52 sites. You're responsible for training. What's that like training? That's a lot of locations to figure out the needs and then manage specific needs for each site and do that job. So I imagine you're wearing a lot of hats. What does that process look like?
This is a dream come true to me. Let me tell you. So when I got my degree, I was excited as can be, you know? And I remember driving down the street one day and I was thinking to myself and I said, man, I wish my company had a training position because I love, I love talking to people. I love teaching people new things. If my job had a training position, I would 100% jump on it right then, right there. And God said, bam. I tell you what, about two weeks later, my job said, hey, we are eliminated your positions, but we're giving you an opportunity because we are starting and we're going to have a training position. We're going to have a supervisor position. We're going to have an analyst position and we're going to have an inventory partner position. And then if you don't want those positions, we will help you get another job within the company. And I was like, oh, man, this cannot be. This is the most exciting thing ever. Like, there was no other job I wanted to apply for. I absolutely love my job. I love teaching people. And so one of the hardest things, even in my interview, they said, hey, and this is before we even got my position, like when I was just at the regular position, they said, how do you do with change and people that need to change, but they're kind of grumpy, it won't change? How are you able to handle that? I said, those are my favorite kind of people. I could change some people. I can take a horse, I can lead a horse to water and make it drink it. I don't care how old that horse is, whatever the saying is, I can do it. Those are my favorite kind of people. And they have learned 100%. That's me. When they tell me these grump butts tell me, no, we're not doing it that way, Margaret. This way is easier. The reason why this way is easier because the system doesn't work now. Every system has kinks in it when it starts, right? And I used to be a gamer. I still kind of am a gamer. But I know just from watching TV or whatnot, what I, what I, I reach people in two different ways. I use the game system and then I use music. So first off, I say, when the new PlayStation or Xbox comes out, right? Before it comes out, they have testers test it and it's just a small group. They figure out whatever bugs they need through that. But they still need to figure out, they know they need more bugs, but there's more bugs in it. But the only way they can get those bugs out is by having a mass majority use the system at one time. So hey, so they put it out. Black Friday comes, they say, okay, we'll give you 500, play 500. They put about 2,000 out. So then 2,000 people have it, they play it, oh, it starts crashing, does this and the other. They fix those bugs, do an update, put a whole new Xbox and PlayStation out. Everybody goes buys a new one, blah, blah, blah. Everything's great now. But the only way they can get there is if the mass majority changes. It tries it. So the only way a new system can work is if we start putting the data in there. But if we skip the data, our system's never going to work. Then I say, so I'm going to give you this example right here. Now, I was born in 1984 and eight tracks, I was not in the eight-track era. I was, but I was not, alright? But I know eight tracks came before cassettes, okay? Records, vinyls was in between there, but they were first, then eight tracks, then it was cassettes. Then it was CDs. We have boom boxes. We had our Walkmans. We had our Discman. Now we're streaming. You had to scoot before you can crawl. You had to crawl before you could walk. You had to walk before you could run. So you can't tell me you ain't used to change. You fell a whole lot of times on that bicycle. So guess what? The system's going to do the same thing. But if we don't do what we need to do with the system, it ain't never going to get where it needs to be. So what I can do for you is prove me wrong. If the system truly do not work like it's supposed to work, show me by doing what they want you to do in the system. If it don't work, and then we can track that, guess what? We could fix the bugs. But what if it does work? And you want to know what? The system works, baby.
It sounds like you have a relatable piece. Yeah, the relatable piece is important in that connecting with somebody to figure out how to get it to come together. So it's really cool that you use the gaming and the music as a way to relate to people.
Because older people relate to music. Younger people can relate to game systems. So you just have to know where it is and, and understand. You know, I was a bus driver, believe it or not. I aspired to be a bus driver for a second. And I'm a small person, so I'm like five foot and barely 100 pounds. Whoa. So when I became 21 years old, I thought it would be cool to be a bus driver. So I went and I did the training. They got a small bus or a big bus. I was like, nah, if I'm gonna drive a bus, I'm gonna drive a big bus. I'm gonna drop a bus, man. And so I drove a bus and I drove for three schools. And every time I got to them schools, the high school and the middle school, the superintendent was already out there or the principal. And they were ready to come and talk on my bus. And so I'm like, this is weird, you know? So I'm just going and going. So one day I got to East and that man was out there and I said, he came to my bus and I said, hey. He said, yes. I said, why are you at my bus every day? He said, because I need to get your kids in line. I said, what kids in line? He said, yes, students, you are our eighth bus driver this year. And by this time, it's February, so eight, that's a lot. Well, school don't start until August, right? So I'm like, okay, so what's the issue? He said, they can't control these kids, so I'm just automatically here because there's always some pink slips or I gotta give them a speech or something before we go. And he says, so why you don't never have a pink slip? Why you don't ever have, I don't ever have to confuse your bus now? What's going on? I said, first off, these is kids. I used to be a kid. I'm a talkative kid when I was a kid, okay? I rode the bus in elementary and I'm telling you this, I wasn't in class with a lot of these kids all day. Yes, we were in school together, but we were not in the same class. So when we came, at the end of the day to get on the bus, we had things to talk about. We had to catch up. We needed to gossip. We needed to do all that stuff. So who am I to tell these kids to shut up? I just tell them, stay in your seats, keep your hands in the window and keep it so I can hear the radio. They do that. They want to talk to me for advice. So the older kids sit up at the front now instead of the back of the bus because I'm younger or whatnot. So we just sit here and chit chat and you ain't gonna have no problems. I never once had a problem other my, none of my kids, out of all three students, even my middle school and then middle school ones knew me because their brothers and sisters were my, were my friends or whatever. They tried me one time. I wrote their ass up. I did. Because I don't play, I don't care who you are, okay? My job is my job and your safety is my job too. And I believe in everybody going home. And I am not going to jeopardize my job for a friend, a family member or anything. If it's right, it's right. If it's wrong, it's wrong. I believe in integrity.
But it sounds like you want to find the root of how people are feeling and be able to match their. You want to meet them where you are, yeah?
You're definitely picking up on that because I had told you two different stories, you know, with my training piece and I took it back to kids. You have, if you want to get anywhere in life, you have to find an equal space and relate. If you can find that equal medium, you're gonna be alright.
It also sounds like, you know, as I was doing some research, you're very involved in the community on your website. You mentioned you're a third generation advocate and you take after your mother Catherine and grandmother Margaret, who's who you're named after. So what about them has inspired you and has kind of guided some of your experiences thus far?
Well, I'm gonna tell you something. I just found out about my grandmother, my grandmammy. We call grandma and grandmammy about 10 years ago or whatnot. Well, I always knew about her because I hung out with grandma. I was her road dog or whatnot. But my mama just let me know some insight on why I was feeling some of the things I felt. So we'll start with my mom. My mom, she's always been a kid advocate, advocate for the children or whatnot. She used to be the meanest person at McAdams. All the kids remember my mom, the light-skinned one with the hazel eyes. And she was mean, but they respect her 100% because she demanded her respect. You're gonna call her Miss Kathy, okay? And then as she progressed, she got to this organization called Hope Street Youth Development. And that group was where it gave the kids the voice. And we were the ones who were our own advocates and advocating for the community, for the state, and essentially for the US, you know? We wanted it to be fair and right for everybody. And so we did protests back then. Our big project was stop cards. And that was, we were trying to build a relationship with the police officers. And back then, the police officers had to, they, they were supposed to give their, every time they met someone, they were supposed to give their business card. But it wasn't fair because the city wanted them to give a business card. The police officer, the police force wanted to give their, give their business cards to everybody. But they also wanted them to pay for it themselves and they weren't getting paid fairly, you know? And so our fight was to help them get funds so they didn't have to pay for their cards anymore out of their own pocket. So we protested. Carl Brewer was the mayor back then and Chief Williams was the chief of police. And we even talked to the state and we actually got it to be funded. I did recently stop a police officer and ask him if it was still, if they had to pay for their own cards or if it was funded by the city or the state or whatnot. And they did tell me that they now have to pay for their own cards. So if I get to city council, I do want to, I don't think that should be something that comes out of their own pocket. We also fought for rights for immigrants and things like that. My biggest memory was going to DC and protesting with 5,000 people on the side. We protested against Tyson. We protested against Ms. Chow. Ms. Chow was over the licensing and IDs. And that was good times. Going to DC, I mean, going to Michigan for retreats to learn how to be a leader. I really, really, really enjoyed being a part of Hope Street, bringing National Night Out to Wichita. We hosted block parties. I used to be the host with Tijuana Hardwell. It was, it was a really good time back then. I wish we had more things like that in today's world. So on to my grandmother. I found out later in life that she was a big advocate for rights. So back in the day, if you were a part, if you got food stamps and cash assistance, then what back then was SRS, they would come into your homes and check to make sure your husband was not, or you didn't have a man living with you or whatnot, that you really needed the needs and black folks and, and poverty people's homes, which was not right because the men were the providers. So whatever income that the women, that the families would get, would come from the men. And the reason why they needed help is because they weren't being paid right, right? So what this did actually was drive the men outside of the home because they needed the assistance. So the men would leave and go to hotels or go with another woman. And it was really breaking homes. So we have a lot of outside children through to the system, breaking up our homes. And so my grandmother, along with other people, her name was Margaret Lidle. Some people know her Margaret Lidle. Some people know her as Margaret Craig or Flowers, along with other people. They fought to get them from coming into the house because that was not right for them to drive the man away. You know, when that was how they were getting income. So things like that. And I was like, wow, grandma did that. It was like, yeah, she was always, so my mom would have to go live with her in the summer times and whenever they were lobbying in DC or in, or in Topeka, when I had to go live with her aunties and uncles. And she had got to a program, my grandma found this program and she lived with the Amish family. And she loved that actually, for a summer, she would go and live with. So it was a good time. Like, I kind of get jealous of, and it's weird because it was such a struggle back when my, when our parents was coming up, especially for us, you know, black people in segregation and everything. But I am so jealous of my parents and, and my elders and what they went through because they really paved the way. And it hurts my heart to see some of the things that are happening right now, knowing what my elders went through to get me to be where I am. And so I just want to be the best I can for them and for my kids and then their kids and my cousins and everything else.
Sounds like you've had the experience to learn from two wonderful women who did incredibly, incredible things. And you know, you're doing incredible things too, you know, putting your hat in the ring to run for office is not an easy thing to do. It's an incredibly vulnerable thing to do. And it sounds like you have a specific idea of what you want change to look like and you're going after it. So it's a really cool and inspiring story to hear where you learned from and how you're taking that and moving forward with it.
Thank you.
And you also mentioned something about, you know, leading anger management classes. That's a very specific niche. It sounds like you have a really deep interest in trying to figure out how to help people and do emotionally intelligent work, if you will. Like what led you to want to do that? And especially at a young age when that's not something that people are typically thinking about.
Well, when we were young, we noticed that we just, we just wanted a better, we wanted to be better people. And part of, goodness, I can't even think of the program. But we had, went through training, part of being part of Hope Street and everything. We went through these training where we got nationally certified. And then we went into different middle schools and high schools and gave them classes to help them keep the power within themselves and teach them, if someone else, if you're able to get upset about something that somebody else said, that's taking your power away from you. Who controls you? Do you control you or does somebody else control you? And that was the biggest thing is letting, words can, words can hurt. Don't get me wrong. 100%, words can hurt, words are, but what can we do? Someone else is hurting us because they're hurt. We can walk away. That's the, say I love you. Say, hey, let's just talk this out. We don't need to hurt. We don't need to touch each other. We don't need to hit each other. We don't need to shoot anybody. Let's just talk it out. Find out where this is really deriving from because if you said something to hurt me, Find out where this is really deriving from because if you said something that hurt me that bad. That means something else is hurting you even worse. And I love you, you know? Just teaching love and, and to top things out, um. Because of ninety-nine other problems out here where someone is getting killed or something. It's just because of a misunderstanding because somebody else was hurt off of something else. And they just didn't tell, they didn't tell you their feelings. So feelings are okay. We all have them and we can, you can have a bad day one day. We're gonna give you that. The next day, hey, 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 hey. You know?
Yeah. And I'll, I'll shift gears a little bit here. You have two daughters. And I got to hear a little bit about them when we chatted last week. But tell us about your daughters and, you know, the role that they play in your life and I wanna hear more about them.
So I got, we triplets. I got a light skinned one and then I got a brown skinned one. And the, my oldest, my brown one. She is my identical twin and she hates it. But she is so thoughtful and she is the, she is the glimmer of my eye sparkle. That girl, her name is Tyrecia Gordon. I live and I die for her. She, no matter what she does, she is amazing. You know, in school, she was a straight A student. As and Bs, you know, once we got into high school, she wanted to be part of the, um, she went to North High. She, um, was on the basketball team. She was a cheerleader. Um, she did track for a little bit. Covid hit, I think Covid would mess her up, but she still was an amazing person. Covid did a number on them kids, you know? She still got those grades. She still played ball. And, um. She was in the biomed program. She wanted to go to North High for the biomed program. And, um, she almost didn't go because other kids, um, said that, oh, it was hard and they quit. And so she called me one day and I said, girl. One thing we don't do is quit before we started. You know, you do what you wanna do, but you're giving someone else your power. You see, it always goes back to giving someone else their power. And I told her, I said, you're giving someone else your power because you ain't even try. Just because it's hard for them, how you know it's gonna be too hard for you? And I said, but if you don't wanna do it, don't do it, you know? And, um, she called me after school and she said, okay, mom, I'm, I'm doing it. And I was like, okay, girl, what changed your mind? She said, cuz I can't give nobody else my power. You know, and she actually excelled in the biomed program. You know, she decided not to go. She, she did go and did the CNA, the bi-. She went through WSU Tech while she was in school and got all her certificates and everything else. But she did not wanna go to college straight out of high school cuz she was tired. And I get that. But she is going back now. And she said, I wanna be a doctor. She's, 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 um, paying for her school and gonna go to med school. But she's still in preliminary, so she's gonna get her surgical tech now. And, um, then my little one, she just wants to be everything her mom and her older sister is. She just loves us so much. And so we just love her so much. And she's a gossiper. She always got all the tea and she clocks it. And, um, she keeps me, that's how I know clocking tea. Cuz she keeps me informed, six, seven, you know? I'm so, I'm so glad I got her. Is that, oh, this one, he's more secretive and quiet, you know? But this one right here, shoot, she gotta let her mama know. I love her so much.
That's amazing. But it's funny, the, the terminology is hard to keep up with, so. You, you know more words to help out than I do.
Girl, she had me watching this, um, K-pop demon hunter all the, and she, and she don't even like musicals. And I'm like, how you listening to this? Oh, but the music is upbeat, mom. It got it. I said, okay.
That's what, I have heard that. I haven't seen it, but I have heard people, people love it. So, so tell us, what does a day in the life look like for you?
I wake up about four o'clock in the morning just to wake up and lay there in silence. And listen to Court TV and scroll through Facebook. And then I have the clock and I work at seven o'clock. But my, um, people around my house, they start getting up. My oldest gets home about, um. She doesn't live with me, but she stays, she stays in the apartment above me. She gets home about six twenty, six thirty. So I'm up listening for that. My little one, she gets up and starts moving around six thirty, seven thirty. My niece, she gets up whenever. Um, but that's my time at peace because that little one can get up at any time, really. So my quiet time is from four to six thirty in the morning. Get up, start moving around, eating, whatever. Clock in, or take the dog out, take both dogs out, feed the bird. And clock in at seven, seven thirty. Meetings, 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 trainings, you know? Get off work at seven, or take the little one either down the street to, um, get a ride or we'll walk to school. I do stop from work from that. And then I come back home and go to work. Um, after work is time to, um. I also go to the gym about five, four thirty, five o'clock in the morning, sometimes, not all the time. But after that, it's time to, you know. Start campaigning, go into whatever event I need to get to. Throughout the day, I'm thinking of new strategies, reaching out to new people, trying to make new connections. Then at nighttime, um, we eat, we normally eat out because we're always on the go. Um, if it's not a sport or I'm campaigning, I do not cook that often at home. Because we are really, I do know how to cook. But I'm on the go so much and by the time nighttime comes, it's normally just two of us. So cooking is kind of, we have to weigh out our money and, you know. So some, most of the time it's just cheaper for us to just to go out to eat. So that's what we do. And she goes to bed and then I think of the next strategy of how I'm gonna make the next connection. And before I go to bed, I like ask myself, Margaret, what are you doing? Are you, you're really putting yourself out here. Are you doing the right thing? You know, but as I'm campaigning and I'm talking to people, I'm feeling really good about it. Because of the same things that I'm concerned about, they're also concerned about. And I'm aligning right up. So, but it still gets scary and nervous thing as the people are like, oh, you're such an outgoing person. But I am so shy and nervous. Like I really need to survey the area before I do things. And so by me ca- um, being a candidate, I'm just opening myself up. So at nighttime, I go through all the emotions. But when I wake up, I feel fully renewed and I remember I'm doing this for myself. I'm doing this for my kids. I'm doing this for my cousins. I'm doing this for my city. I'm doing this for my neighborhood. I have a plan. I have a solution. I need to get it done. So let's do it.
Yeah, that's amazing. And thanks for sharing the vulnerability of putting your name in the hat and running a campaign. And being a candidate in an election, it's incredibly vulnerable thing to do and most of the people I've talked to, you're, you're doing it. Because you see you have a vision for change and you wanna serve your community, right? So it's, it's an incredible thing to hear your story about that.
So let me tell you this to Morgan before I, I am doing this on my own. I have a treasurer. I have a sister out of town. I have friends, I have family. But I'm doing this on my, on my own. You wanna know why I'm doing this by myself? Because I believe in me. And a person needs to be able to believe in themselves. Before anybody else can believe in them. And because I believe in myself and I wanna show y'all how much I believe in myself. I'm doing this. Now, if you wanna jump on my bandwagon, baby, come on, let's get it, you know? But I just wanna show everybody, this is how strong I feel about how I, what I stand for.
What ultimately made you throw your name in the hat and want to run?
Um, the, my ultimate deciding factor, my, um, father had just passed away. I was, me and my sister Katina and my sister Malika was sitting in my living room. And I had just picked up, um, the newspaper. I was reading the newspaper on my phone. And I said, damn it, Tina. And she said, what? I was like, I can't believe this shit. And she said, what? I said, they just spent six hundred thousand dollars on two fancy porta potties, two. And she said, what? I said, they just, she said, I heard what you said. That's crazy though. I said, I know. This, I'm so sick of this city. I'm so sick of the stupid decisions that they make. And my sister said, well, what's stopping you from running for city council? I said, huh? She said, what's stopping you from making the change? I said, well. I don't want, what about this? They said, um, well, Margaret. And I'll say it. When I was in my twenties. I did get pulled over and I had a suspended license. They took my little butt to jail. I didn't pay the ticket, but I learned really quick cuz I was not, I wasn't about that life. I made the best of it though. I did. I played a little game while I was in there. Um, I wasn't in there for long. But still, you know, I got scarred straight quickly. Um. And I was like, I didn't want anybody to, to pull that up and use it against me. Only crying. Parents, what these politicians be doing? I never said that out loud, but yeah, I was in jail.
That's why you're human and you have life experiences. Like everybody makes mistakes. And if your mistake is not paying your ticket, then you know, you were all human.
Yes. And I tell you what, y'all look up my mugshot and I, I love the smile. And I got this biggest smile and I remember telling the police officer. I said, wait, wait, can you make sure my smile is okay?
Think I wanna look good.
What the reason for the picture? So she took my picture and then she laughed. She said, you got a good smile. I said. Hair is crazy cuz I went, I was at work. I worked third shift or something. So my hair, it's, I don't know. But anyways, uh, but my smile, she even let me look. I said, okay, that's, if anybody look me up, I got a good mugshot. I should not be telling this information, but y'all know what? I'm a hu- human and I am just that type of person. I'm honest, you know? Life happens. It was a suspended license for a cracked windshield. Stupid, but it happened. And that's.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a part of your story and yeah, like you said, it could be much worse.
This is my G baby. I haven't got to see him in a while. I'm in the middle of a podcast. I see. I'm Big G and this is Little G. Say hi to the world.
Hi, I'm Lord.
Alright, go over there. I'll see you in a minute. Point. Little G. I don't have any grandkids in real world. And but, um, that's my daughter's best friend's kid. So it's my grandkid, but I'm only forty, so I'm too young to be called grandma. So I said, I'm Big P and you Little G. And so.
Well, I'll wrap this up. I'm sorry, we took a little bit longer than I know I promised. But, um, I'll wrap this up with the last three questions that I ask everybody. Do you remember the first time you ever voted and what that experience was like for you?
It was the most wonderful thing in the world. I have been voting ever since. I was eighteen years old. I couldn't wait. My birthday is October twenty-second, so right before November, right before vote. And I could not wait. My government teacher was the most exciting teacher in the world at Bishop Carroll. Shout outs to Bishop Carroll. And, um, I couldn't wait to vote. I couldn't wait to get that sticker. And I even went before school, so I didn't even get to miss school because my auntie and mom, they believed in going to work on time and everything. So they got up all extra early. They would take me to kid vote, you know, so that didn't matter. But when I became eighteen, because they were taking me since I was younger, I made sure I got my butt up at six o'clock in the morning. I was at that poll at seven. Yes, ma'am.
Why is voting important to you?
Because of my vote counts. And the more of us that vote, and I even get my friends now, for my birthday, you wanna know what my friends do? We get together and they go vote. That's my birthday present from them. Because I say, I need y'all. They, our vote matters. We matter. But as long as we don't vote. That's just giving whoever we don't want the opportunity to get in there because we need to be voting to make a change. Our voice is nothing if we don't vote. So that's why I vote and I make sure I take people to the polls with me every chance I get. And that's, that's my ask, literally. That's my birthday present from my friends is even though voting isn't till November. And my birthday is October twenty-second, I asked them to go vote. And so we go vote together.
That's a really cool idea. And how can people find you and connect with you?
Um, you can find me on Facebook. Um, I prefer you go to my campaign page versus my personal page. Um, Margaret Wheeler Shabazz Wichita, um, District Six. But you can find me at Margaret Shabazz as well. It's fine. Or you can go to, and I need to update my website more. But, um, show WWW dot Shabazz for change dot com. S H A B as in boy, A Z Z for change dot com.
And I'll leave us with, you can follow us on our social media pages. Our Instagram is at Transparent Campaigns. Facebook is Transparent Campaign Initiative. And you can visit our website for more information, transparentcampaigns.org. Margaret, thank you so much for the conversation and taking the time to talk to us. I really enjoyed it.